Going away, and I know Amber can't make it tonight, so I think we have everybody who's going to be in attendance.
Okay.
And we do have a forum, so we can proceed. So I will call this meeting to order. And then we'll start with a roll call of committee members. So Leanna?
Here.
Laurel?
Here.
Vicky?
Here.
And that's it. And Chelsea, here. Okay, it's like, it seems like not enough people, but because we have the right people here, we can go anywhere. Okay, so that takes us to 1.3, the invocation. Would somebody like to read that? Yes, please Laurel, but I think you're on mute still.
Okay.
There we go.
This is our school. May peace dwell here. May the rooms be full of contentment. May love abide here, love of one another, love of our school, and love of life itself. Let us remember that as many hands build a home, so many hearts build a school.
Thank you Laurel. All right, to item 1.4, does anybody have agenda modifications? Hearing none, we'll move to item 1.5, audience to address the council. Do we have any audience members here who would like to address the council on items that are not on the agenda? Alex, do you see anybody in the chat? I don't see hands raised. Anybody in the chat? Okay.
You got that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and I think that is just for us. I don't, unless they miss or know that it wasn't meant to be read at the meeting, I think it was just for us.
I apologize. I wanted to get my headphones so my husband wouldn't be interrupted the whole time. Thank you.
And it also doesn't pertain to anything. Sure. Um. Sorry, I was just addressing Leanna. She was asking about the email that we received from a parent, just to confirm. And so just for information, we don't have to receive, to read out loud correspondence that we receive regarding items unless it is requested or unless the, um, the individual would like to come present that. And so I was just letting her know that, so that's good for all of our information. And it doesn't pertain to an item we're voting on tonight, so other board members make sure to check your email and read that, because I'm sure it will become relevant in the coming time. So that will bring us, if there's no audience members to address the council tonight, that will bring us to item two, the consent agenda. And since nothing was pulled from the consent agenda and agenda modifications, I will entertain a motion.
This is Leanna. I'll make an emotion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Leanna, with the motion. Do I have a second to approve the consent agenda?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Vicky, for your second. All right, then I will call for the vote. Chelsea, aye. Leanna?
Aye.
Vicky?
Aye.
Laurel?
Aye.
Thank you very much. That brings us to section three, governance. 3.1 Finance Committee Report. It does have my name on there, but I did not attend the finance committee, so I'm going to ask Susan to take that one.
Somehow I knew you would do that. I am going to pass on having a report. We have a number of items from that meeting that we'll be talking about later. I think that covers it.
Then there's Tricia with the parent council report, but Tricia is not here tonight, but I do see that we have Jackie Hammer in the audience. Do you have anything from your council that you would like to pass on to us? Maybe?
I really.
It's okay if the answer is no. I totally put you on the spot, but I figured if there was anything pertinent being discussed that you knew of, I would love for it to be passed on, because our reps not here.
There was just a lot of data that were brought up to us at our last meeting, that Susan wanted us to be on a radar for things coming up in the spring. Oh man, I don't really remember much else happening at the last meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you for that, Jackie, and sorry for putting you on the spot. I just like to make sure we have, we're connecting the dots with our groups when possible. So thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, that takes us to 3.3, the Equity and Inclusion Task Force Report. Susan?
So the Equity and Inclusion Task Force did not meet this month. We did meet last month, and I don't think there was a report here, so I'll share a lot of accolades about our Indigenous Peoples event on or on the Friday. The assembly had really a positive experience, really great involvement with students and understanding of Indigenous people and their part in our world. And then this week, we are having a gratitude or Thanksgiving assembly as we go into the fall. Break, and we'll include in that our new addition to the invocation, which is our gratitude for the land that we, that Blue Oaks sits on.
Great, thank you for that, Susan. All right, that takes us into 3.4. We'll start with, which are the policy reviews. We'll start with 3.4.1, and this is each 3.4.1 through 3, and we're each the second reading, so we will take action on them tonight. Correct. My memory serves me, it's two and about, so. So first would be the employee assignment. Does anybody have any questions, or Susan, did you have anything additional to present to us?
I do not. No, again, this came from a review of our current policies and update to clarify some language. Maybe not, I don't.
Everything looked, because there was this one item that I had a quick question on. My apologies for not being up. Almost there, sorry folks.
Susan, I do have a quick question. I was just curious. I worked as a certificated aide at one point, a paraprob, and I was fully credentialed, and I was just curious if you have people in that position, and I, I do feel like I was very frequently left with full certificated responsibility because of my credential, but you know, only recognized in my role as an aide, and I, I just, I just asked that for both the legality of it and compensation for certificated paraprofessionals. Did that make sense?
Yes, it does, and, and we've had that situation a couple times before in the past to Blue Oaks, and it's been addressed. But currently, we do not have any credentialed teachers in paraprofessional roles.
Okay.
We do have one who is also has a sub-credential, which I consider a little different, and when she works as a sub, then she gets an additional stipend.
Okay. I just always wondered about the legality of it. When I was left, you know, I, to me, it wasn't so much the pay, but just the legality of of using that certificated qualification when the person, I guess if they were left, they were in charge, but thank you, I was just curious.
Yeah. Are there any other questions or comments? I will entertain a motion on the employee assignment policy. This is Chelsea. I will make a motion that we pass the employee assignment policy. Sorry.
Second.
And Laurel, she, she wasn't very loud, but she seconded it.
I did second that, thank you.
Thank you, Vicky.
Alex, who do you have? Okay, I think Leanna and Vicky both seconded it pretty close to the same time. For the record, it sounds like Alex has Leanna's, just so everybody knows, because we're reviewing minutes. And thank you, though.
I'll speak louder next time.
Thank you.
It's, it's tough with this format, and it sounds like you've got some loss of, loss of voice. Okay, so I will call for the vote. Laurel?
Aye.
Vicky?
Aye.
And Leanna?
Aye.
And Chelsea, aye. Right, so that takes us to our next policy, the leaves policy. This one, I did have a question regarding the and the sick leave. So it looks like you've got a cap for your certificated staff, but as this reads, it does not appear that there's a cap for your classified. I'm sure that was intentional, I apologize. The second one, Blue Oaks High School's part-time classified non-exempt will approve full-time classified employees will be front-loaded with leaves, and then paid sick leave will carry over from year to year for both part-time and full-time employees.
Correct.
Okay, so obviously an unlimited amount.
Is that typical language? I would, I would word it more proactively credited with, front-loaded just sounds kind of like casual language to me or something.
I think it kind of, it comes from the labor code.
Okay.
So.
Good enough.
It's to that.
Thanks, Susan.
Yeah, we don't have, so part-time classified accrue one hour for every 30 hours of work, so if they work 15 hours a week, they get one hour for every two weeks.
Correct.
The, the, and, you know, we may need to change the language so it's clear, but then if they're full-time, they work 40 hours a week. For example, then they'll get hour, 30 hours of, they'll get their hour.
Yes.
Yeah, they get it front-loaded, so that.
And that makes sense to me. Needs to be changed. The question was, like, I noticed that in your first paragraph that pertains to your certificated staff, it shows that, unless I'm misreading that first one, but it says that it carries over from year to year up to a maximum of 15 days.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
That it doesn't define your amount of days carried over.
Yeah, that's confusing, because.
It does say regular, it says Blue Oaks High School's regular salaried exempt employees, so are the classified considered regular?
This, no, regular salaried exempt employees would be all one description.
Okay, and that's what I, that's how I was reading it. I was just making sure that I wasn't misreading it. So, not that you're required to put a cap on it, but it might be something worth considering, because if you have somebody who doesn't take sick leave and works here for several years, you could potentially have.
Well, that's, that's part of the benefit, though. In fact, I'm really questioning why we're saying a maximum of 15 in the first paragraph on that, because one of the benefits.
Days and not hours.
It could be, yeah.
Classified being hours, not days, I mean.
But, yeah.
But yeah, and I know also with your certificated, there, if it is carried over, at least my understand, I shouldn't say no, what I understand it is that that can also contribute to their retirement at the end, so if they do have some accumulated.
They can retire earlier.
Correct, but if we're chapping it at 15, then that doesn't really benefit them in retirement either.
And that, and that's kind of my, as I've read that, I'm like, did I miss this? Because have an employee go on pregnancy, for example, that's 15, that's 30 days right there, so then they can't accrue enough sick time to cover what they're actually need, and I don't think we have been capping in 15, which is another, because I'm looking, spend some time looking at numbers.
I mean, I get that you don't want somebody to just all of a sudden be like, I have two months of time off and I'm going to take it now, but also if they have accrued and saved that, then.
Yeah, and there's, I mean, we're talking about sick leave here, which we'd say would be to doctors' note, which means that they probably would actually need the time.
Correct.
So then we would just be like, not paying them for time that they needed. I would certainly accept just removing that up to a maximum of 15 days.
Okay, then I would like to, does anybody else have any questions or comments?
No, good catch.
Yeah, I just, I figured that the intention was either one or the other, since there wasn't a cap in both places. I figured there was either a missed cap or a missed
Right.
not cap, anyways. Okay, then I would love to, everything else looks great, and I apologize for not asking them at the first meeting. I was accidentally had the first reading and then forgotten. So I will make the motion that we accept this board policy with the with the, yeah, removal of the cap for the amount of days carried over for regular salaried exempt employees.
Good one.
I second your good catch.
Yeah.
You got, you got twin, twin seconds.
Again.
Again, it's all good.
Okay, so Alex tells me she heard Laurel second, so that's what's on the record. I'm sorry, Vicky.
I've heard Vicky's.
Okay.
I will go ahead and call for the vote. Vicky, you can vote first.
Aye.
Great, Laurel?
Aye.
Leanna?
Aye.
And Chelsea, aye. All right, great, so then now we have 3.4.3, which is the child abuse prevention and reporting. Did anybody have any questions on this one or changes they'd like to? Or did I? So. Hearing none, I will accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the child abuse policy as stated.
Thank you, Leanna, for the motion. Do we have a second? I see Vicky waving to second. Vicky, you are on mute.
And I'll second that.
Perfect. Vicky with the second, great. And seeing no other questions, comments, concerns, I will call for the vote. Chelsea, aye. Leanna?
Aye.
Vicky?
Aye.
And Laurel?
Aye.
All right, and then that takes us to 3.4.4, our first reading of the grading policy.
So we have not had a grading policy before, so this is new. It did go through the pedagogical team to review for the information on the year-end narrative and report card grading. So those are my comments.
And so under this, I didn't see, maybe I just missed it, or maybe I'm just because I was looking at the word areas. But I know that we've been, at least, my understanding is that all the teachers have, I know our classroom has, been using Ares regularly, so that, you know, parents can check the portal and ensure that grades are up to date. And is that also going to be expected of specialty teachers?
Yes, so the grading policy is, this is just a policy, so it's pretty broad. It doesn't go to that detail. The other piece that we're also working on is the whole system of what grading will look like for the school, and you'll notice when you have your parent teacher conferences, some changes to the specialties process as far as doing that, so you'll get more information in your parent teacher conference from the specialties, so they should each have a report on your child's, how they're doing. And then we're also working with our Ares to get everybody access to the portal, so, so they can do what they can do. We've also, you know, changed how we do specialties in seventh and eighth grade, and started, you know, so we're doing a lot of different things.
Lots of changes. Now, I'm excited, and I, I do want to say that it has been huge having that, to be able to check on, we do grade checks in our house, and do missing assignment checks, and so that's been really handy to ensure that we don't get surprised at grading time. It's like, what do you mean, you have 37 seconds?
Yes.
I mean, I know that we'd be communicating too long before that, but it's nice to catch up when there's one.
Well, it's.
Before it's a concern of the teachers, you know, to have that opportunity to nip it.
Well, it means that before you go on vacation, you can say, hey, we got to get this done before we go, and yeah, it's, it's huge, especially for, that, we're not doing that, just so you know, for first and third grade. But we start that process in fourth and fifth, and then of course it's solid in the middle school, and so.
That makes sense, considering the grading is different in the middle and upper grades.
But even having that access in third grade and above is great.
Yeah.
Normally that doesn't start until junior high, but every parent Ares, that's.
So, that's great, that's great. I really appreciate that, and I know that it is an extra effort on the teacher's part to have those consistently plugged in and up to date, so I just want to express my appreciation for that, and thank you to everybody listening to that. So, did anybody else have questions on this one or comments? So I was just checking for hands raised on my participants list, trying to check all the places, make sure I don't miss anybody. Okay, so hearing none is just a first reading tonight. Susan, did you have anything that you wanted to point out in here to ensure that we noticed, or things that?
Well, I think it's pretty straightforward. I think the thing to note is that as a Waldorf school, our first priority is the year-end narrative. And I think that, and the report cards and grading are secondary, and really for the purpose of public schools. If we're in a private Waldorf, we wouldn't have that. So that was an interesting process of going through and pulling information from other Waldorf schools and, and looking at it from a public school standpoint, keeping that focus on that, the teacher's understanding of the charge.
Great. No, I, I noticed that also and appreciated that, because I know that the year-end narrative is such a huge part of of the true assessment of the whole child, whereas the report cards capture such a limited scope. I'm afraid that that's addressed. Okay, so that, with no action on that item, that will take us to item 3.5, the COVID-19 response update.
Yeah. And for the record, the promised report is that we have had this month two cases that caused exposure in the school. One was a staff member and one was a student. And so we are still staying in the low digits with those, but it is a continuing issue. And then the other thing that, to bring to your attention, the mandate, as you all received an email, and we've today from one parent, because that's, continues to be a question and a concern, how the mandate is going to roll out. Of course, it does not affect us yet as our students, the final version of the vaccine or the final approval hasn't gone through yet, it doesn't directly affect us, but it is a concern for our parents, and many parents are getting their children vaccinated, and I'm starting to have questions about whether or not they'll have to continue to wear masks, or if they're exposed, will they have to be tested, and the answer is, we don't know. So when we do, we will update the policy.
Thank you for that, Susan, and also from my understanding, I know that there is a district in Southern California, and pardon me, I can't remember if it's LA or San Diego, that has a lawsuit filed against them, because they, as a district, pushed that timeline up, and so if anybody's familiar with that, it's my understanding that Chief of Unified has no intention to accelerate any mandate or anything like that. So it is still just what has been literally presented by the governor, and also in that, just for informational purposes, there is the personal beliefs exemption, so you you do have the option, as of the way it's currently worded and with everything that has been proposed, that it is still a choice. So, you know, with the personal beliefs exemption, so people understand what that is, if you choose not to get the vaccine under that, then you submit that you're making that choice, and so it doesn't have to be signed by a doctor or anything like that. So that is the current information, and we are still just following the, the trail, waiting for, waiting for their instructions.
And the good news is our numbers in Beatty County are going down and continuing to go down, it looks like, so that's the positive.
Yes. Been quite a journey. Right, does anybody have any questions or comments? From the audience? Any audience members that would like to comment on item 3.5?
This is Steve. Did I miss my opportunity to talk?
No, Steve, this is your opportunity right now. Are you the one? Sorry, without a picture, I want to make sure we have the right person. So Steve?
It says Brooke.
Okay, perfect. Alright, Steve, this is your opportunity. Please remember that you have three minutes.
Yeah, I'm just curious why we didn't get an email about the exposure in Ms. Kate's class until Monday? Because by that point, you know, we go in public and wear masks, but masks are not a cure-all. And so I'm curious if there's a way to improve the timing of that. If you found out Friday, even though school is closed, like, and you're at home, the exposure was on Wednesday. So when you find out, like, is there a way to send emails? Or do you just wait till you come into the office Monday, like, it's no big deal? Because we could take additional precautions if we had the information that we need.
So Steve, I appreciate your question. I don't feel like an individual case that this is the place to discuss that. But I will ask Susan if she will let us know what the protocol is when there is an exposure. And then if you'd like to address, like, your individual case, I would request that you do that with administration first. But Susan, if you can share kind of what the school procedure is.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not remembering the details, Steve, to the details of the notification. When we receive a notification, we have to do an investigation before we announce it to assure that we have all the specific information as to when and how the exposure happened. So after we do that and we are sure of the details, then we can notify the community, notify the class or anyone who was exposed.
Okay, I understand that. It was almost a full week. I understand it was a holiday weekend. It seems like it could be faster. Maybe we could have a conversation offline, as I've attempted to do in the past. But it's pretty upsetting considering by the time that email dropped, I was in a room while, albeit I was masked, I was in a room with thirty other people, potentially able to give it to other people. And it's not really fair, so thank you.
Appreciate your concern, Steve. I would encourage you to reach out to Alex to set up an appointment to discuss that further. But thank you. Thank you for bringing that up and thank you for bringing that to our attention. Is there anybody else? Seeing none, or any members of the board have any questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, take us to item 3.6, the MC2 marketing update.
I will present, I was looking for some fun, more fun graphics.
The next page.
Okay, okay.
The next page has the graphics.
Okay, there we go. So that makes me go back a bit now. Yeah. So after the last meeting, one of the things we're asked about is how productive our marketing program has been. So we put together this report. We have had one hundred and thirty-two people clicked on our student interest form enrollment page or called to school directly from our Google Ads since we started our campaign in May. We have one hundred and twenty families that have submitted the student interest form since the beginning of this school year. So that's since August seventeen. Forty-four have signed up for a school tour on our enrollment page. And of those forty-four, twenty-four found below via the search engine through Google. And this was from the information of our website. Overall, Blue Oak has had about sixty-three new enrollments since the start of the school year. So that's since August seventeen. I think that that number to me was impressive with that number. But, you know, also knowing that as our overall enrollment has dropped, we, our turnover is very high. And I will continue to, we're continuing to moderate, and by far the majority of those who are leaving us are moving out of the area, either to Orland, out of the county, and then they're going to stay over there to go to school. Or one I talked to this morning is moving, they, they've lost, they were renting, they lost the house they're renting because the owner wants to sell it. We've heard this story before. And so now they have a job in Crescent City and are moving to Crescent City. So a lot of that, that affects here in Butte County. And in Chico, still, things are still settling as far as the numbers. But people are also still moving to the community as well, so.
I think, I think just even having one hundred and thirty-two accessing the student interest form just from the search engine. I know from experience that the typically, the biggest way that we get information is word of mouth. And so to have that high that's coming even from ads, and then in addition to, you know, what our families are sharing with their friends and people they know, that's very encouraging to me.
Had those families left and it not be backfilled, it would have been dramatically different, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Tours is a big, big thing. Fifty is one thing, but having that many tours is really good.
I had a chart that showed the, of the people who registered for a tour on the website. It showed that more people were interested, or more people found us through the surgeon than from a friend or colleague. But then I changed the form and the chart away, so it couldn't show you. But that's where the numbers came from.
But that's great, because, I mean, because for me, that, that's really exciting because we're reaching people that we weren't already reaching versus reaching people through the website because somebody that went to school here told them to go to the website. So I think that's, that's really encouraging, that it's bringing people that are outside of, the extended family, if you will, you know. And then the, you know, first touch is the next circle out. And so, I think that's really good.
Definitely validates that.
So, and then we met, this is my executive director's report also, but we did meet again with MC2 and invited Cheryl Grant to come with us in order to address specifically some language and some thoughts around kindergarten. So you'll be seeing, starting next month, some additional work on outreach for kindergarten students.
Thank you for that, Susan. So I'll ask if any audience members have any questions or comments? Seeing none, our audience, do any board members have questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, we will move to the next item, at 3.7, the MTSS Charter Collaborative.
So multiple tiered systems of support are a state-supported process for really looking at all of the needs of children, whether they're academics or behavioral or social emotional. And is a process that allows us to look at all of those needs and fit it into the school as a whole. The state has a new grant out, which will allocate us fifty thousand dollars with the idea that they have now a basic training for all staff. And it's an online training. It's all, I should say, all instructional staff. And it requires us to put ninety percent of our staff through that over, I believe, the next five years. So we will be working, the intent is to work with Butte County Office of Education. They have a staff member that will be supporting the charter schools in Butte County and to help keep us on track and to get through this. And Butte County Office of Education is the world representative for the state for MTSS. So they do really know this process and know what we're doing. So we are very blessed to have them available to support us.
Great. Thank you, Susan. Do we have any audience members that would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, do we have any board members that would like to ask questions or comment on this item? Seeing then, do we have any board members that would like to make a motion to approve the school going forward with this?
I'll make a motion to go. Sorry, Vicky, you left me off again.
That's alright.
Looks like we have Leanna with a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Great, thank you, Vicky, with the second. I will call for the vote last chance. Any questions, comments from the board? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Laurel?
Aye.
Vicky?
Aye.
Leanna?
Aye.
And Chelsea, aye. Takes us to 3.8, the Educator Effectiveness Block Grant. I really like all this money.
It is nice. So this is actually a need to be a public hearing. We didn't note that. But this Educator Effectiveness Block Grant needs to come in front of you twice and needs to be preferred by December. So I will go over what the grant is and if there are any questions. And then we'll have it for people again next month. So this is a a, a monthly that is specific to the state. It's a five-year plan that focuses on the building of professional development needs of our staff. So what's, this money came out in the last couple of months. And so what I did was use the questions and data from the LCAP and other conversations around what would be the most effective use of these funds as we see right now. We have the actual plan available. So the first area, and this also went through the Finance Committee. The first area was for to provide Waldorf mentorship and new teacher induction and to develop a Waldorf 101 program for new, for new Blue Oak teachers and staff. That's one of the things that's come up, is something that's simple and direct and explains Waldorf to brand-new staff. And so those, again, that's an expensive or five-year period is what's there. The second one is twenty thousand dollars towards participating in the Public Alliance for Public Waldorf and to strengthen our membership so we become full members by doing their complete self-study and peer review. And again, that, that desire to be a recognized Waldorf school has come up in many areas of conversation and discussion. The next one, and they have this list of things you can choose which ones you want to cover. And all of them are very important. But I tried to go with the things that were the biggest priority for Blue Oak. So provide a school-wide counseling and mental wellness services and related professional development materials and supplies. We have worked hard this year on things like the trauma-informed practices, suicide prevention, and mental health services. We still have work to do on that, so it felt like it was good to continue to support that specifically. The next one was school climates. You know, school climate is those items that make a strong, positive environment for students. And the work and discussion we've had around implementing equity, diversity, and inclusion and to continue to support that work seem the biggest priority here. But things like restorative justice and other things are part of that as well. And then finally, way down at the bottom, to work and prepare for educators for the intended increase in transitional kindergarten and preschool opportunities. So a focus on those preschool educators and early childhood education there.
I like all those ideas. I like all that stuff.
So that breaks down exactly to the seventy-six, three thirty-nine?
It does.
I noticed the last number was, yeah.
It calculates, it's always the trick, where are you going to put the three hundred and thirty-nine dollars?
Right, thank you for that, Susan. Do we have any questions or comments on this item from the audience? Seeing none, do we have any questions or comments on this from the entire council?
So we'll read this twice.
Yes.
Vote on it in December, is that a good idea?
Yes.
And just, just a quick, you said it went through the Finance Committee, and I assume that I already got the answer, but just for.
Yes.
Did they recommend?
They recommended, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Kind of hear that.
Exact denominations, like, they were allocated specifically for Friday?
Yeah, they, they looked at the same document.
Great.
And had the discussion around it, and they agreed.
Thank you. I have no further questions. And it's last chance?
Is, I just had, is the preschool piece coming soon?
I, we will probably talk about it in December.
Okay.
So hopefully, yes.
Thank you for this, Susan. It was exciting to get to explore opportunities, which is money. Alright, well, that takes us to item 3.9, the Employee Benefit Renewal Proposal.
So this is our annual review of employee benefits. We have, the changeover is now in January for the year. So this, these are the current So, this, these are the current options. There, there was, I think, 12 pages of things that they went through to, to study, to recommend this for us. Our, the first one is our current medical plan, and then there are two options that are available to us. The first one is, you can see a slight monthly increase. It's a monthly amount of $100 a month. And then, the second one is the select, select network option, which is just slightly lower. The difference, as it was explained to me, is the, is the number of providers in the network. So, I did ask the staff to reach out to, to our provider or broker. If they had any concerns or questions about that, we gave the staff the list of who was and who wasn't in the network, the change from our current to the select network. I did not receive any information. I received an email from our broker today, and I didn't receive any information that anyone had that concern. So, the Finance Committee reviewed this. They did not make a determination of which they would suggest because we didn't, we hadn't had the time for the staff to look at it yet. But since the staff now has had the time and we haven't had any comments of negatives, start moving to the select. And unless Nick, he might have some additional information that I don't have. But I would suggest that we move to the select network, which gives us the same services for a slightly lower price this year. And then, the dental and life and vision renewals all go up. If you can roll it a little bit more. Dental and life, also the, go up some, the dental a little bit. The life is significant as a percentage, but it is still a fairly small cost. We're going from $62 a year per, per employee to $75 a year, so.
That's what you've got to love about statistics, you know? It's like, it's a 20% increase. It'll cost us $100,000.
Yeah.
Oh, a little less drastic. Okay. So, Nick, did you have any additional information from staff members or Riley? I guess we've got both of you here, that maybe wasn't passed along through the broker?
No, I reached out to him, and the explanation was that it was the same plan, just with fewer providers. So, as, as long as you had, you checked the list for the providers. I did just kind of, no, I don't have any other information.
Thank you, Nick. It was a very short turnaround, I remember. Say that. We only had it for about 10 days. So, I appreciated people looking at it when they, they could because we want to get it in, approved this month so that employees have next month to look at it before it goes into effect.
Great. And it gives them the opportunity to select which plan fits them.
Yes, and we will arrange a meeting where the brokers come and meet with staff. That's great.
And actually, the question I had, it sounds like Nick answered. So, really, the difference, because I was looking, I'm like, I'm only seeing the current renewal. So, really, the difference is the renewal is the same in both of our renewal options with the, like, as far as coverage goes, the exception being which providers are available to employees changes. And, do we have any questions or comments from the public? Very none. Do we have any questions or comments from board members? My thought, my thought would be to go with the select network if, or since the, we don't have any indication that any of our staff members will be impacted by the change, by the reduction in available providers. So, if everybody's providers are still on the list, then I say we go for the less expensive option with the same coverage. Laurel?
I have, I've been having problems with the audio on my computer, but I wanted to make sure. It's my understanding and from what Nick said that teachers may not have had adequate time to really look at it. And it's a big deal to change providers. So, I'm really hopeful that teachers have more time and can weigh in on it because when you've established a relationship with the doctor, and especially if you have a primary care physician this day and age when they're so hard to get, I just would like to make sure that the, that the teachers can look it over a little more carefully. And if I'm misunderstanding that, I apologize. I'm, again, I'm having trouble with the audio on my computer.
I don't know that I would say that they haven't had the time to do that. They were given the full list of providers. It's been a week ago, so they have had the information for over a week. And like you said, Laurel, it is a very important decision, and I would believe that the staff and faculty would have looked at that list. And I mean, I know it's the first thing I did when I got the package. So, and, and would have reported that to us if they were going to be negatively affected.
Thank you. And I, I know there's always a concern for the teachers, and I just, it sounds like that's been addressed, so thank you.
And then, obviously, we don't have the list of providers, but my thought is, you know, if we do have any new staff members that come on board, is it a fairly good-sized list of providers of the select network? Or is it like, you could see one of three doctors?
It's, you know, if I, if I would just, my memory of the list, and I would have to go back a few days. But, so you'd have a full list, maybe three of them are, you know, full-page lists, maybe three of them on the page are not covered in select. So, by far, the majority are covered in both.
Okay. Well, that's, that's great. I like that. Okay. Well, do we have then, if there are, if there are no further questions or comments from board members? Do, would anybody like to make a motion that we accept one of these policies? Okay, well, this is Chelsea. I will make the motion that we move forward with the insurance renewal on the select network.
I will second it.
Thank you, Leanna, for the second. Last opportunity for questions or comments.
I just pulled it up, and it's about 16 pages long.
Excellent.
You're right. It's only like two on each page, two or three on each page that aren't.
Great. I don't know if you heard that under everyone, but Alex said she just pulled up the list of providers, and it's approximately 16, it is 16 pages long, and there are only like two to three providers per page that aren't covered on the select network.
Chelsea, I don't know if I can still comment on something since a motion has been made, but if I could, can I say something?
As, as the teacher representative, I think that's absolutely...
I'm sorry?
Yes, please go.
Okay. I do just want to say, although the changes between these two plans aren't very different, our plan is not good. Lots of stuff is not covered. Our out-of-pocket is huge, especially for, for people who are on the family plans. We're paying the bulk. And so, the changes in these two plans, I, I do actually think going with the select provider is better of these two options. But it's like choosing between two really horrible things. And I don't really fault the school necessarily for that. I mean, they, they can't do anything about the insurance environment, but other schools do contribute more to their employees' portion. So, we, we are paying a larger portion than a lot of the schools in the district for what is, in essence, not a really strong plan. And so, for instance, my wife has spent hours calling providers that are supposedly available on that list and being told that they're not taking new patients. And again, this is not, that's, that has nothing to do with the school. That's the inefficacy of the insurance and medical system at this point. But I do just want you all to be aware of that, of that, like, even though there is a list of 16 pages of providers, my wife has literally spent hours calling every single provider on that list and being told there's no, they aren't taking new patients. So, sorry, I just needed to say that.
Putting that out there and keeping that at the forefront, Nick, I definitely think that, that there is a place for discussion on the contribution side of that. And, and I think that maybe for next year's budget, that'll be getting started in just a few months because this year's going so fast. And if maybe that's, Susan's, I mean, we can ask the Finance Committee to review in the coming budget section.
I, I just want to add, it raises an important issue that when a company proposes a plan, that that's a good question, you know, to, to ask them about the availability of the providers on the list because that's critical, and especially when you have a family member who's ill or facing some kind of a, a health crisis. It, it's beyond maddening. It's, it can be frightening. So, thank you, Nick, for that information. Think it should be factored in when we're talking to basically salespeople.
Absolutely. Yeah, the, the insurance medical provider situation in this area is, is hurting me, to say the least. But, and thank you for bringing that back up, Nick. And Susan has said that she would bring that back to the Finance Committee for the coming budget cycle and to be reviewed. So, definitely always worth, worth looking at, seeing what we can do to support that. Okay, so we do have a motion on the table with a second, so I will, at this time, call for the vote. And Leanna?
Hi.
Vicki? Vicki, you're on mute.
I.
Thank you. Laurel?
I.
And Chelsea?
I.
Right, Susan, that brings us 3.9, 3.10, the audit draft.
Oh, yay. So, here's the audit draft. It's ready to go. We had no items. We did have a change, and I notified you last month that the PPP loan was, we had counted it as an asset and received in the 2021 year, and because we didn't get the final approval till July 10th, the date of the letter is July 10th, it therefore needed to be moved into this year. And of course, we didn't know that until recently. So, that is the only major, there is a major change between the reports that you've received and the final audit, and that's what it is.
Thank you for that. My favorite page of the audit is always the last page, when it looks like it did on this one. All right. And so, do we have, thank you for that, Susan. Do we have any audience members with questions or comments about the audit? Then, do we have any board members with questions or comments about the audit? And just thank you for turning to my favorite page. I think it's actually the one right before this. It says for this year. Yes, our audit did not disclose any matters required to be reported in accordance with the government auditing standards. So, that's great. No findings? No findings. So, are there, there's no other questions or comments? I will entertain a motion to approve the audit draft. Laurel, did you raise your hand? I looked away for a moment, and I thought...
I'm smiling because I forgot Vicki raised her hand. I didn't want to cut you off, Vicki.
I looked away for a second, and I missed it. Vicki, please go.
I move that we accept the audit draft as presented.
Excellent. Thank you, Vicki, for the motion. Do we have a second?
Laurel's second.
Great. Thank you, Vicki and Laurel. Last chance for questions and comments from the board.
Laurel's audio sounds great.
I know, Laurel, I don't know what you did, but your audio all of a sudden is excellent, unearned. All right, and I will call for the vote. Leanna?
I.
Vicki?
I.
Laurel?
I.
And Chelsea?
I.
Excellent. Okay, item 3.11, the first interim report.
This is the annual report, or the first interim for that. Jim, were you on?
Yes.
So, Jim, I'm gonna let you do your spiel on this one, please.
Yeah, I mean, to make it simple, the first interim is the check-in for the authorizer and the state on the school's outlook as of October. So, this is the October financial update, both year-to-date and forecast for the year as of this time, presented in the standardized format. So, I think I told the Finance Committee, essentially, if we didn't meet every month, this would be the mandatory check-in to update on what the outlook was as of October. As mentioned, the PPP loan moved. It's still, you know, it's still net assets to the school, the forgiveness, but it kind of alters what from budget to actual this year. That said, it helps because the 21, 22, being the challenge that it is, is forecasted about a $200,000 deficit. And now, that 500-plus of the PPP is moving into this year. So, you're getting a 200-ish thousand deficit offset by a 530 adjustment. So, you get a net of about 332 forecast net gain.
That is excellent from a paper perspective. It looks much better that way. That makes a lot of sense because I was wondering, I was like, why, how come we have such a big decrease in our income? But that, that makes so much sense, and I'm glad that's all it was, and it wasn't something that we're counting on, wasn't showing up. Okay, and so, do we have any questions from any of our audience members on the first interim budget? Seeing none, how about any board members, questions or comments on the first interim? We're a lively bunch tonight. All right. And great, well, hearing no questions, I would love to hear a motion. I'll make a motion to pass the interim report. Great. Thank you, Leanna, with the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Great. Thank you, Vicki, with the second. I will call one last question. I will call, uh, one question that I have, unless anybody else has one. Um, since we don't have Amber here tonight, I assume that this has been to the finance committee and that they have a recommendation for us?
It has been to the finance committee and it was recommended that the board approved the stuff.
Excellent, thank you, and with that information, I will call for the vote. Laurel?
Oops, aye.
Leanna?
Aye.
Vicky?
Aye.
And Chelsea, aye. All right, that takes us to 3.12, the CPR AED and first aid training.
Administrative, administration is proposing and requesting that we consider providing funding to support the CPR AED first aid training for all school employees. This is a, an item of require of all our students, school employees, and struggle on a regular basis to get done. What, so in discussing it, feeling like it's not a huge cost for us. Uh, I think it's 30, they proposed 30, do you have that $30 per employee towards a pro-training online and it's at, for more than a year? So, um, okay. Should have been a proposal from the finance committee, I don't know, because they gave it dollar amount, I think it was up to 80% of the. So the recommendation from the finance committee, speak for them since I'm on the committee, is that we, we pay for up to 80% of the online training class to assure that this certification is able to be done by all employees. So it's an increase in benefits that I'm asking, that we're asking for. There is also the Lifeline Training Center, which is in-person class. And we are proposing that if somebody chooses and feels they need to go to the in-person class, that that 80% of the pro-trainings costs be paid towards the Lifeline Training Center.
So essentially, you're saying the dollar amount would be the same?
Yes.
And it would be equivalent to 80% of the pro-training?
Right, so if they, if they feel they want or need, or for some other reason, are going to the Lifeline Training Center, that we will go ahead and take that same dollar amount and put it towards Lifeline. Or any other in-person class that would be available. But our intent is to assure that our employees are able to get certified and to utilize the online training class for that. Lot more flexibility than trying to organize trainings here or get employees to trainings locally, getting in the schedule and everything, so it felt like a, um, a good choice for the school.
Thank you for that, Susan. Do we have any questions or comments from the audience? I was just gonna say, it says, if I remember correctly, it's Steve, right?
Our question's funny, I'm sorry.
Right, was it, was that Steve? With your hand raised, log in as Sarah.
Are you talking to me? This is Sarah.
Oh, it's Sarah, okay, sorry, Sarah, you have your hand raised, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to um, share my experience with that CPR um, topic. I have done all of the above, I've been CPR certified since like I was a teenager, I'm in my 30s now, so every four years and whatnot. And this last time I got certified, I did that online course that you're talking about, and boy, was it a breeze, it was amazing.
Great.
So, I, I am happy that you're making that decision.
So, but that was a worthwhile training, though, it was easy and-
It was worth, yeah, it was worthwhile and it was effect, it was effective and, well, for me, I mean, I don't know, I liked it.
Okay.
Great, thank you for that feedback, Sarah.
You're welcome.
A quick comment, just to add to my own, uh, we did have the nurse review it and she approved it also.
Oh, that's great information as well, thank you, Susan. And Nick?
I can recommend a good traffic school online as well. I'll leave it there.
So I, I just wanted to ask, if, if it's a training that the school is asking the employees to do, why won't the school just cover the whole cost if it's only like $30 per person? Sorry, my dog is being annoying. Um, because otherwise, is the idea that the employee pays and then comes and asks for the reimbursement? Because that's like a lot of steps for that. Anyway, I'm gonna stop talking because my dog-
Thank you for that question, Nick, and, and that, before you answer that, goes hand in hand with a question I actually had. Is this training required of all staff?
Of all of our staff?
Okay. So then that does lead, lead into Nick's question of if, if it is required, why then is it not recommended to be fully covered?
We could, it's, because it is a personal certification that goes with you when you, whether you're working or not. So if I was working at a summer camp, I would also be able to take the certification. So that request that the employee put in part of the, um, a small amount towards the funding is, is the thought process there, that this is a personal certification that previous to this was 100% that we required 100% and, of the employee. So we're saying, okay, we're going to pay a percentage of it and you will have a certification that we keep for four years.
So it's a four-year certification?
Believe it is, I would have to go back.
And you can do it online.
Yeah, yeah, and, and it's not going to be financially terrible if you decide to, you know, to pay the whole month. But that's, that's the initial presentation.
Does anybody else have questions or comments?
Um, I was just gonna say, I, my mom is a retired teacher and had a student, while it's rare, have cardiac arrest in the classroom in elementary school and was like flighted to UC Davis from there. And the student lived, um, you know, but I think it is very important for everyone to have that CPR because more and more children with cardiac issues are becoming an issue. And then as far as the cost, I see, you know, maybe if you compare to the medical field or other fields where continuing units are required to maintain licensure, those are out of pocket. So if it is four years or five or an 80% is covered, that's fair.
Thank you for that. And does anybody else have any questions or comments on this, the board members? During none, um, I will entertain a motion on this item. And then to pass it as was- With the 80%? Yes. We have a motion from Leanna to pass as was presented.
I'll second that.
Laurel, you weren't quick enough, I saw your hand and before I could call on you, Vicky was in.
Okay, so Vicky, second. Um, last chance for questions or comments from the board. Okay, and I will call for the vote. Leanna?
Aye.
Vicky?
Aye.
Laurel?
Aye.
And Chelsea, aye, thank you, motion passed. Uh, that takes us to 3.13, the stipend for supporting teachers to include, do you want to address this separately or together?
I do want to address them separately.
Okay, great, so then we'll first do 3.13.1 for emergency leave.
We've had an employee, like one of our teachers on emergency leave. We've had a second teacher, um, who has stepped up and is covering main lesson and planning for that teacher. And then a, a sub is helping to cover both of the classes, and it's a pretty unique situation. Um, so I propose this, I do want to say those, that one of the things, and this came to the finance committee and they approved it, but they also were concerned that it, it wasn't, um, for the work level it was being done, it wasn't a comparable amount. So I went back and talked to the teacher and, um, so this does propose $200 a week. And I would like to propose to you to consider $600 a week instead. That was basically three hours of work, uh, per day, um, per week at $600. I would like you to consider that at this time. This can go back to finance committee if you would like it to. And I can review it with them again if you would like, like me to. It's basically $30 now.
Oh, I came to 28.
No.
Susan, Susan, a question in my mind is related to Nick raising the point about, you know, the school paying for, um, all of the-
If you are training.
The, the training, you know, or a portion of it. And I, I think what I would need to understand better is the different pots of money that it comes from, so, so I, with, with full respect for the other board members' opinions, I'm a, I, I'd ask maybe that it go back to finance committee if it's not. I don't know if it can be made retroactive if it is approved, but that's just throwing my thought out.
And on the coattails of that request, I guess my question would be, um, where in the budget would this be paid from and do we have, because this is a pretty unique situation. So, um, do we have, we have that in the budget and, you know, also ensuring that if a situation were to come up again, that we also have financial support?
Yeah, um, this would come out of the budget, out of our sub work because, for that. And we do of course have that line funded right now and have not expended that line item. Um, and partly, yeah, so however, I can't tell you that we won't have expended it by the end of the year.
Third, influx in the amount in the sub-budget right now because of COVID.
I can't hear.
What, what was that comment? She asked if there was, are you asking if there's excess funds in the sub-budget currently?
But she was saying we have that, I, I thought you were alluding that because of COVID funding, there is an additional amount of sub-funds.
There are additional, um, funds that we can tap from COVID to go into the sub-budget because that's part of, um, the concern of COVID, uh, that goes along with masking and hand sanitizer and, and all of that, that's part of that, can come out of that. We also, because we've had a dearth of subs so far, and you'll see that in the next item as well. We are not spending as much as I would have expected on subs, even though we've increased the amount because we're still struggling to actually get subs here. We have, we're making progress, but, so our specialties are doing an awful lot of that work right now. So, again, in this kind of a flux situation, it's hard to say it's gonna put us over budgetary.
And I, is there any more questions on item one on this? I have someone item two.
And a question, are you on public from the board?
Um, clarifying questions for fact-finding, come before public comments, and then we can give opinion comments after. So if there's any clarifying questions, I guess it's a clear question.
My clarifying question is, could this be temporary or are we?
Um, I'm estimating at most this will be six weeks.
Oh, I mean, like-
Is this a one-time request or are we setting precedent?
Yes.
Is that the question?
Yes, like for the 2021, 22 school year to be reevaluated in the future?
I think you could put, I, I do feel like this is a pretty specific and unique situation that would be very unlikely to happen if a lot of things didn't lay out exactly in a certain way. You know, the teacher who's available, her experience, the connection with the class, all sorts of things that made this work, uh, in most ca- serendipitous. It would be very rare for this to be something we did all the time, I mean, it really is. And, or that a teacher would be that committed to doing it, because it is a lot of work. So, um, I think saying that you will do it for this particular situation rather than making it a long-term, um, making it a, you know, like a policy? And putting in a, you know, so we're doing this for this particular situation, it will be precedent. If this need comes up again, well, we can look at it again. But, um, I don't think you need to put it in to the policy level, it's really just for this particular situation.
Okay.
Okay.
Great. Um, and then did you want to present item two? Or should we vote on?
I think you probably should go.
They're just both on the same cover page, so I just wanted to make sure that we are voting on those two, that those two apply separately. Okay.
I think we might do that, yeah, I think that makes sense.
Then I will open it to public comment for this item one.
Item one is, didn't you just say you wanted to raise it to 600?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, that is the main point of number one right now, is we want to up to 600. And then, yes, and then item two is paying-
I think Chelsea is definitely gonna put a public comment for one.
Yes, yeah, because we're not gonna vote, item one and two will be voted on separately, so this is specifically just public comments for item one at this time. If there's any public questions or comments, and then I will go to the board. Sorry, I'm having a battery show my computer, we're trying to rectify, so, um, I see no, and hear no public comments on this item, so I will turn it over to the board. Um, Laurel, I know you, just to bring it back forward, I know you requested it go back to the finance committee. And thoughts, questions, or comments from the remaining board members?
Hearing from Susan that there are the funds in substitute fund, and it is an emergency situation. I think I would go ahead and like to move on it tonight.
Thank you for that thought, Leanna, and does anybody else have thoughts or questions? During none, um, I will open it for a motion.
So I'll motion to raise it to 600 per week and approve it as a temporary one-time situation.
The motion. Um, and Alex, you got that it was the motion to be increased to 600, and just for this individual case? Great. And, and do I have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, Vicky. There is a motion and a second, we can move on with the vote. Vicky?
Aye.
Leanna?
Aye.
Laurel?
With consideration for the additional information from Susan, I vote aye.
Thank you, Laurel and Chelsea, aye. All right, so that takes us to the second item on this, which is 3.13.2 on your agenda.
Okay, and the other issue that has come up for us as we are short on subs is we're spending a lot of specialty time to prep and cover for subs. So one of the things that the specialty teachers came up with as a solution to closing specialties is to share the job and utilize their prep time. So which, of course, they're contracted to have that prep time and they are currently not getting it. So in working with specialty teachers, this option was devised to, in order to cover them, that they would have a have the ability to be paid to cover when they lose their prep time. And this was as the week, based on the established rate for substitutes of $200 a day divided by the divide, I think it came to $34 for a lost prep time. The finance committee adjusted this, asking that rather that we wait until they accrue six hours that they get paid as they, they do it. So if they do one day this pay period and they get that extra abandonment.
Okay, not until it gets six hours?
No, that was the change of the finance. They said that, yeah, and that's how we've done prep. We have a lost prep time we do for all teachers. So if a teacher, a specialty teacher doesn't come in and so therefore they lose their prep time, then we have a accounting process we do to get them a day, to get the, a day of a sub coverage on another day so that they get that time back. And so that had been the basic structure. And I proposed that, but the finance committee asked me, asked or is proposing to you, I should say, is, is recommending to you that we do that as it occurs. So they will get, at their next paycheck, they will get whatever hours added to their paycheck each month.
And that sounds like it benefits also the lack of subs.
Yes, that helps us cover the lack of subs too.
That's, I certainly, I, and I appreciate you filling in the part with the teachers. So I was curious as to how that works when a specialty teacher's out. Classroom teacher loses theirs, so it sounds like there's some good precedent for that, that it is, that it's common. And so I want to ensure that our specialty teachers also have their prep time honored. Yes, they're providing, providing a big part of our children's education, so.
And thank you for working on the numbers too, because that's helpful.
Great.
I would also like to make clear that I, I'm proposing that this be, that we go back to the beginning of the year and any coverage time that's been done so far is not considered volunteer.
Retroactive.
It would be retroactive until August, back to our first, first day of school.
Okay, great. So just to ensure everybody heard, it sounds like Leanna asked in the question.
Is that based on their, on our system of reporting or is that recorded within the school?
It is recorded within the school as we cover for subs.
And so just a quick recap to make sure everybody heard everything. And so the recommendation from the finance committee and the request at this time would be and that we approve this and that, that the stipends to the specialty teachers would be as one full day of time is accrued, then that pay would go into their paycheck. So essentially
Let me correct that. It's, it's done that way. It's for each prep period, a set amount of money.
Oh, gosh, so in lieu of that, okay.
So even if they only covered three classes, which is not going to be that, I mean, with that. But they would still get paid for the three classes, even if they haven't made it up to the six.
Excellent, so the opposite. So I'm glad that I recapped that.
I'm glad you did, yeah.
Wrong page. Okay, so the request is then that they receive a stipend for each prep period lost that would be paid on the immediately following pay period.
Correct.
Excellent. And and that it be retroactive to the, to the beginning of this school year. And Yes, well, not instead of when subs aren't available.
I think it was in, did you say it was recommended we pay in lieu of getting a sub?
No, it's generally used because we can't get subs.
Yeah, okay.
That.
Because cost-wise, it would be the same to get a sub. I certainly prefer that we be able to get a subs or specialty teachers can do their, their work.
They aren't asked until we don't, can, we've expanded our resources of substitutes.
Great, thank you for that. Good questions. Okay, so now that we have all of the factual information, I will turn it over to the audience. If there are any questions or comments from the audience. Hearing and seeing none. And then I would like to then turn over for questions or comments from the board. Also hearing and seeing none, then I will open it up for a motion.
I move that we pay our specialty specialist teachers the substitute pay level for their lost prep time when they sub. That was confusing.
No maintenance.
Did it? Okay.
And Vicky, would you, I have a recommended or a request for addition to the motion if you would accept. And it would be to add the piece of it being retroactive to the beginning of the school year.
Right, yes, this pay would be retroactive to the beginning of this school year.
Thank you for that. And then I will second Vicky's motion. Chelsea with the second. All right, then I will call for last chance comments or questions from the board. Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Vicky?
Aye.
Leanna?
Aye.
Laurel?
Aye.
And Chelsea, aye. Great. And that takes us to our faculty report.
All right, hello once again. Let me just share my screen. All right, like last time, I am resharing what was shared with parent council. So here we are, starting in the lovely Lily Rose kindergarten. If you have little ones who are connected to the younger part of our school, lantern walks have been happening. So they have been crafting and singing our lantern walk songs and sharing in special moments. As in the Maple Rose kindergarten as well. They just had their lantern walk just about a week ago. My favorite quote right here, "Teacher, it looks like a festival." And then not long ago, we had our Halloween parade. Fun to have that tradition continue. In grade one, they finished the alphabet and had October at our school. For some of them, it was their first October at our school. And here we are in grade three. Our class has started learning about time. We begin exploring the concept of time through the kingdoms of existence, mineral, plant, animal, and human. Mineral time is slow, patiently holding the cracks and sand of time. Plants grow according to seasonal time. They need sunlight, seasons, and heart or, or, excuse me, and heat or cold to grow. Animal time is tuned to, into the day. After all, who sings in the new day and hoots us to sleep? Human time is moment by moment. We need time to help us organize our busy lives. And boy, is it busy right now. Grade four with Ms. Lee. The Great Wall of Base Tens is over here with the class. Today's students work together to build a giant square of 10,000 square units. And they've been in their human and animal block, looking at how humans and animals are similar and different. Octopus picture done on the first day, writing done on the next day, after a day of resting and then recalling ideas. Fifth grade, my grade level partner, Mrs. Hamblin, had a deep appreciation for all things spooky, if I might say. And they created a lovely series of paintings that went along with one of their songs. Cats, goblins, witches on brooms were all painted in order, how fun. And we as fifth grade have been in India. And tomorrow we are going on a field trip to Priya to get some Indian food. And it is a busy week and the kids are also excited. And I haven't told them yet, but I ordered us some goat curry and lamb curry. And I already know a few kids are going to test their luck with it, see how it goes. And then here, our class enjoyed creating calaveras for Dia de los Muertos. And we are currently in a Persia, India, Mesopotamia, Egypt block blocks. We've recently been in Persia and India. And when we come back from the break, we'll be in Egypt and other Mesopotamian studies. But the kids really enjoyed these calaveras, so I had to show them. Yeah, grade six, oh, there's video too. This is new. I didn't know I could play a video. Grade six, the Hobbit geology astronomy with Ms. Jennifer. Let's see if I can play this. Oh. Oh, no. There we go. Okay, back to ah, other things. Grade seven with Ms. Welch, ooh, periodic table of elements. Working with metals, chemistry, all things wonderful. Grade eight with Ms. Jones. Eighth grade is working on writing short stories. Students are also learning about various literary genres, using sensory details for descriptive writing and studying the literary works of authors famous for their short stories. Games with Mr. Meyer. In games, we have been learning various folk dances in grades one through eight. In the upper grades, we started playing volleyball, which for many students is the first time they are playing a competitive team sport. And throughout the grades, we have been doing everyone's favorite activity, playing with the parachute. And those are the update, oh, there we are, Senor Smarjan. During the month of October, we learned the meaning of Dia de los Muertos and how this holiday is celebrated in Hispanic countries. Students made different crafts to honor the memory of our loved ones who passed away. Each grade had a different project and they wrote a description of who they dedicated their projects to. And here are a few of the projects. Some alabrijes, some masks, and some boxes and descriptions. It was really, really beautiful. That's all I have for us.
Thank you. That was nice.
Riley, does anybody have any, any audience members have any questions or comments for our faculty report? Any board members?
I, I just made the comment in the chat that the periodic table of the elements would be a great publicity slide. And as well as the last one, I mean, just beautiful, beautiful work and helping people understand the breadth and depth of Blue Oak curriculum.
Great, thank you for that, Laurel. So true. And thank you, Riley, for presenting that. It's so nice to see what each of the grades are doing and how involved they are.
I enjoy the cultural celebrations. All of this, our fun and the artwork is always exciting to see.
Every time I see Nick's games class, I want to get in the parachute. I know, I was just going to say, I don't think that the excitement and love for the parachute ends in eighth grade. I feel like that's my favorite too.
The dance steps are pretty cool too, just saying.
Thank you for that. All right, that takes us to five executive directors report. I know you said that you had combined parts of it with previous.
I do, well, I have a, I will not share the whole page of favorite moments, but I will share a few of them. This is like my favorite, I think, all of year. I asked a first grader at the morning drop-off if they had a mask. They said, no, I don't, but I have a cinnamon roll. And then they dug in their backpack and showed me a flattened cinnamon roll and put it over their face like a mix. I think, yeah, hearing a fourth grader sing autumn is time for harvest and gratefulness under their breath as they walked along down the hall behind me. A few little kindergarten friends had to stay with me to finish cleaning the classroom as they had not been so helpful during their regular cleanup time. Amidst the moaning and groaning and worries of missing their snack, one child said, uh, what is this? Some kind of labor camp? These are kindergarten. And then our autumn celebration today, pumpkins and muffins and hot cider and real teacups. One happy customer said, ooh, teacher, these are the kind of cups they used in the days of the pirates.
I think we need to read books.
You want to read books? Okay, I will read.
I mean, I know you weren't going to do the whole page, but I, I feel like this one's worth reading.
So la, how did you know it was books? So last month, because only so many people grow mustaches.
No, his name is Nick.
Okay, so, and so last month they grew a mustache and then added some handlebars. I didn't think anything about it. As a student was beating me the fourth time in a row at tetherball, I got gas, I took off my mask. And there was a reaction that spread like wildflower fire throughout the playground. I heard shouts like, nice dash buck or wow. And the last time I saw your face, you had a beard, which was pre-COVID. Someone said, nice face. My fave, however, was from a third grader. They were smiling at me as they approached, but their smiles diminished very noticeably as they came closer. I looked at them and knew right away what was up. You, you have, have you seen me without a mask? I asked, no, they replied, and I don't like it. I laughed and put my mask on. Better, I asked, much was the reply. And I got a reply I got with a big smile.
Oh, the honesty melts.
And then I had got a plate of French chocolate crepes. We have our, our We have our, our electives for the upper grades, and one of them was a French class. And so I got a French chocolate crepe.
That is a highlight.
That was a highlight, yes, of the week.
And nobody was upset by your face and made it.
No. Oh, so we already talked a bit about the, the staffing, we're still with substitutes, and also have a couple aides coming through the pipeline. As we have a number of aides who are college students, so their hours are changing a little bit as we go into January. So we're trying to adjust for that and having good success. Marketing, we talked about, in-service day was Friday, the day between Veterans Day and Saturday. And so we really are grateful for that time to give teachers the afternoon to work on preparing for conferences this week. So they officially start tomorrow, though I know some teachers have already started them. And we also had discussions on the sustainable school, which is from our strategic plan and then positive behavior strategies. And Riley, I thought you might bring some pictures of some little ones, so they can see the dolls that were created during the day, so that was nice. And then fall break is next week, and we are focusing this week on gratitude and thankfulness for the blessings that Blue Oak.
My promise is to bring pictures of dolls once they're completed. We have one completed doll.
Thank you, Riley.
All right, thank you, Susan. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Susan?
Well, I will just say that it's just impressive to sit in a staff meeting, we were there for three or so hours, and have everybody sewing on dolls and cutting things out, making heads. It's just a really interesting, amazing place.
Yeah, it's nice to have staff meetings that people enjoy attending. I think is impressive.
I hope they do. You know, they bought in and they, yes.
Do well attending, while attending to business. Business is always fun, but it's nice to be able to aim for great goals.
Whole person approach, we try to do, so that's it.
Okay, well, there are no other questions or comments for Susan. Then we will head into the closed session. Boot us into our own room. Thank you all.
Can't hear you.
You're here, we're all here. Okay, there we go.
There we go.
Here we now?
Hear you now.
All right, so coming out of closed session, we have no action report. And with that, that brings us to item. I saved paper, it's just the German. Brings us, that brings us to the close of our meeting. So with that, little things.
See you December, what?
Tuesday, December 15.
Tuesday, December 15. You guys have a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday.
You as well. Thank you all. Good to see you. And thank you.